Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome everyone to Poets and Writers California Town Hall Meeting. I'm Jamie Asai Fitzgerald and I am the Director of Poets and Writers California Office and Readings and Workshops West Program. I am based here in Los Angeles and I'm here with our program coordinator Ricardo Hernandez, who's based in New York. And Ricardo is going to be helping with technical aspects of the event and moderating town hall. I'd like to acknowledge that we operate on the traditional lands of the Tongva, Tataviam, Chumash, and Lenape people who made their home here in Los Angeles and New York. So since the beginning of the pandemic, we've been presenting community building events virtually, including check-ins for writers and literary presenters and town halls like this one. If you don't already know, Poets and Writers is the largest nonprofit organization serving creative writers. And these events help us fulfill our mission to foster the professional development of poets and writers, to promote communication throughout the literary community, and to help create an environment in which literature can be appreciated by the widest possible public. Those are our goals. Our community building events go hand in hand with our mini grants program, which co-sponsors literary events throughout California, as well as in New York State and eight cities, by helping to pay writers who give public readings or teach creative writing workshops. I'll talk more about the Readings and Workshops program at the very end of the meeting today, and I'll answer any questions you have. So I'd like to thank the California Arts Council, Arts Council, for its support of this event. And now just a few requests before we get started. Be sure to keep muted while others are speaking, although of course you're free to use the chat to express appreciation, ask questions, share resources and links. We also ask that all attendees practice nonviolence in the chat with each other and with our presenter. There will be time after the presentation for questions, discussion, and sharing of resources. And also, as you may have seen, this meeting is being recorded and it will be shared on our YouTube channel. So if you would like to turn off your video, that is fine, but we would love to see your face during discussion if you don't mind. But please don't feel pressured if you want to keep it off. So I have the opportunity to introduce a very superb poet and human being today, Lynn Thompson. Earlier this year, Lynn was appointed poet laureate for the city of Los Angeles. Her most recent collection of poems, Fretwork, was selected by Jane Hurfield for the Marsh Hawk Press Poetry Prize and published in 2019. The author of Beg No Pardon and Start With A Small Guitar, her work has been widely published and anthologized in Massachusetts Review, Rust and Moth, Plowshares, Best American Poetry 2020, to name a few. Thompson also sits on the boards of directors of the Art Institute and the Los Angeles Review of Books and is Chair of the Board of Trustees at Scripps College. Her work stands out with integrity of form and line, rhythm and play with language, lyric mastery combined with great storytelling. Today, she'll talk about her vision for poetry in LA and beyond, and after, answer any questions you may have, which you can put in the chat or raise your hand to ask a question. After the Q and A, we will open things up to anyone who would like to share resources, events, or other announcements. So thank you so much for joining us. And without further ado, I'd like to welcome Lynn Thompson, LA poet laureate.
Thank you so much, Jamie. This is such a treat and I'm so excited to see so many familiar faces, to see the faces of people that I haven't seen in so, so long, to see new faces that I hope to get to know better. And I'm going to take a point of privilege and give a particular shout out to Jerry Garcia, because I'm so happy he's in the house. He had a few health challenges. So I'm just really, really happy to see you, Jerry. Thanks for coming. And thanks to Poets and Writers for giving a spotlight, not just to me, but to the idea of the poet laureate in the city of Los Angeles. I know we all on this call, on this Zoom call, think it's an important position to highlight poetry in the city. So I'm grateful. When Jamie asked me to talk about my vision, I thought, oh my God, am I supposed to have a vision? How in the world did I end up in this spot? And it kind of took me back to my beginnings as a writer, and particularly was as a serious writer, I'll say. And as many of you know, I'm an attorney by training, but I gave that up to start really studying seriously the craft of poetry and to write the best poems that I possibly could. And when I told my family, there was not universal joy. I seem to recall my mother saying something like, "Oh, Jesus." And one of my brothers said, "Don't you have a novel in you?" And I said, "No, it's really about the poetry." And really gave a lot of thought to that question, because he's not alone, I suppose, in valuing novelists over poets. And the question is, why is that? Why are the sales of books of poetry so much lower than Stephen King? Not to pick on Stephen King, I like Stephen King, but you know, any popular novelist that you can think of is probably selling a lot more of their books than the people that we would consider really important and popular poets. So the question is, who needs poetry, right? A lot of people would say they don't need it. And if you gathered a group of poets, I would guess that most of us would say, you know, it's either not taught at all in school, or if it is taught, and I'm talking about from elementary school through middle school through high school. And if it is taught, it's not taught particularly well. Nevertheless, I cling to the idea that people really need poetry and want poetry, but don't really think of it as a daily habit that they go to. Like they might read two pages of a novel before they leave for work or while they're eating their lunch, but they're not going to pick up a book of poems. But if someone gets married, graduates, has a baby, there's a terrible disaster like 9/11 or this past January 6th, who do they call? They do not call the novelists. They call us. They call the poets. Because they're experiencing something that they know needs to be put into language or captured in language, but that they don't have the language to capture it. And they say, "Oh," you know, many of us, I'm sure, can recall people saying, "You know, my son is graduating. Could you please write a poem?" Or, "You know, my nephew's getting married. Could you please write a poem? And could you write it just this way?" They have very specific ideas about what they want. And so it seemed to me, when I was fortunate enough to be selected for this post, the question is, how to bridge that gap between graduation and marriage so that every day, poetry is a part of the natural landscape and is just as important as picking up a paper or a newspaper or reading your daily blog that you bring into practice, this idea that the poetry is an important part of what you read on a regular basis. So to that end, enter the poet laureate, right? She's supposed to have the answers to all of these questions. Some of you who know me well know that my initial reaction was, "Yikes! I don't know, you know, how I'm going to do this or what I'm going to do." When I looked at the call from the city for this position, it says that the poet laureate serves as an official ambassador for the city by promoting the city's rich literary community and celebrating the written word. Question is, what's the best way to do that? And what are the reasons that we think people resist poetry? And how do we convince them that that's not really a basis for them to avoid it? So in my mind, it was, how can I make it easily accessible, accessible whenever they want it? And the pandemic, for all the horrible things about it, and almost everything is horrible about it. One thing that grew out of it was our use of Zoom, which we're sick of. But in the case of delivering not just poetry program, art museums opened up. You could listen to concerts in a way that we weren't doing pre-pandemic, right? So this offered an opportunity vis a vis poetry. So I wanted to take advantage of some of those things. So when I started thinking about the kinds of things I wanted to do, the very first one that came to me was the development of a podcast. I would like to tell you that no one had ever thought of this ever in life before me. You would all laugh because you know that's not true, right? I stole the idea for my podcast, I'm proud to say, from our former National Poet Laureate Tracy K. Smith, who had a daily podcast. I don't know how this woman did this. I mean, to record a new poem every day, it sounds easy, but you've got to make, what poem am I picking? What pithy little thing am I going to say about it? Then the library wants it formatted a certain way. It's more than I thought initially when I took it on. So I decided, congratulations Tracy, you must have people. I don't, so I'm going to do it just once a week. So every Thursday on the library's website, as well as on Spotify and Apple Podcasts, you can find a podcast called Poems on Air. Don't shoot me, I'm title challenged. Everybody who knows me as a poet knows that I'm title challenged. But I came up with that idea, Poems on Air. And I select a poem once a week to read into that podcast. The library also puts a transcript of the poem, as well as a little paragraph that I write to accompany the poem, talk about the poet or whatever is going on. They're frequently thematic, so I've been doing this since April. This month, for example, I am celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month by reading the work of Hispanic poets. That's not always thematic. I'm always scrambling. And so at the end of this, I'm going to tell you, if you have ideas for things that you'd like to see me explore, let me know, so that I'm not always in my own head doing this. But it's really been a lot of fun and like all podcasts, you can listen whenever you want. You might get exposed to a poem or a poet that you don't know, that you want to know more about. That's kind of the goal that I'm shooting for with that. And it really is intended to highlight not only LA-based poetry, although I do try to give high priority to that, but also poets from all over the world that people might not otherwise be familiar with. And I try to pick poems that I think, they're never too, too long. That's not going to work, I think, on a recording. It's going to turn people off. The poets will listen, but I want to get beyond that group. So I try to pick something of medium length, probably not a lot of experimental poetry, because I know that'll make people crazy trying to listen to it, although they'll have it on the page. So I try to make it as accessible as possible. In addition, the library allows me to write a periodic blog. I don't do it every month, but periodically I do it. I did it for Asian American History Month. I did it one month for the Fellows and Faculty of Cave Canum. So I try to kind of pick and choose, what am I going to put on the blog and what am I going to read on the air? So that was a first step and kind of got me out and connecting. And it's been wonderful to get emails or comments on Twitter, thank you, about the poems and how they enjoy them. So that's been a lot of fun. So then the city also is encouraging me to try to work with as many students as I possibly can. And so I just recently spoke with a group of teachers and want to invite and will say to all of you, if you are teaching middle school students or sorry, I was trying to read the chat and I can't do two things at once. Okay. If you have middle school students or you know someone that has middle school students. And I'm focusing on that group, because high school students, it appears to me, have a lot more programming available to them. Get Lit, Right Girl, other organizations like that. And the young ones have different kinds of programming and frankly, they scare me, so I wasn't focusing on them. But I decided to focus on middle school students and to encourage them to write poems about what in their city is important and meaningful to them in terms of public structures. They could be really well-known structures like the Observatory or the Hollywood Bowl or Griffith Park, Venice Beach, whatever. Or they could be a little rough-and-tumble store in their own neighborhood that means a lot. Why they're important or why they're not important. Who cares about the Hollywood Bowl? Maybe that's passe in a pandemic world with all those people crowded in there. But anything that they think about a particular street, it could be anything. And the hope is not only to start posting those on the library's website, but to find other venues, which I won't name now, since they haven't agreed with me that I can have other venues. I would like to videotape some of them reading their poems. And then I was told about insurance and parents and that. So I don't know if I'll be able to pull that off or not, but that's something that's in the back of my mind so that these young people get exposed to and encouraged to write work about their environment. So they don't have to dream up some topic and I'm willing to make suggestions to them. I told the teachers when I spoke with them, I was in a webinar with them and the first question that was asked of them was, "Now, how are you doing? How's it going in the classroom?" And many of them said, "I'm already exhausted. I'm overwhelmed and I'm thinking, oh my God, and here I come asking them to do something else, right?" And so I assured them, I said, "You don't have to do anything other than collect the poems, send them to me. You don't have to read them. You don't have to grade them. You can give the student extra credit if you choose to. All you're doing is delivering them to me." So I'm not sure that they're convinced that that's not still more work than they want to do, but that's the goal. So I throw it out to you, because I know many of you are teachers and many of you come in contact with middle grade students. So that's the group I'm going after. And then the other thing that I am planning on doing, now that our libraries, our branches in particular, are starting to reopen and starting to look at programming again, I would like to not only myself come and read, but I hope to be able to hold conversations with poets, local poets, about some of the poems that I've posted on the blog. I don't know how many of you have had an opportunity to see Poetry LA is curating a series of conversations between poets. And I was lucky, I think it was the first one that they did. I was in conversation with Peter Harris, who many of you know. And it was just wonderful. He picked a poem of mine that he liked. I picked a poem of his that I liked. And we had a conversation about that and it was really fun. So I'm hoping to do a variation on that in the libraries, if they're interested in that kind of programming. Also, I know some children's authors who are anxious to find venues, so I'd like to partner with them to go into the libraries with younger children. So and then I really want to hear about ideas that the librarians may have that are location-specific. So I'm going to be meeting with them later in the month to try to get some programming underway. It's really challenging with us being in a Zoom environment. Librarians, teachers, they are overworked, stressed by the variety of responses that people have to masks and distancing and all of that. It's a very difficult time to try to advance any kind of programming. But I am determined, the help of many of you that are on this call, to try to get there, to do that. I'm going to continue to do the things that I always did as a poet, and that is to try to be a good poetry citizen by recommending places for people to submit their work, judging contests, which I did recently judge the Barry Spacks Contest out of Ventura County. I'll be reading for the Kate and Kingsley Tufts Contest coming up for both mid-career poets and poets with first books, participating in festivals, Lit Fest, God willing, we'll have the LA Festival of Books in person next spring. We'll see how that goes. And a project that I'm just recently being asked to participate in that will combine poetry and film, which is how more LA can you be, right? To somehow get into the film world a little bit. So those are some of the ideas that I have. And I'm really happy to be here to get ideas and suggestions that any of you may have for programming, for partnerships. I can't do it all, but I'm going to do the best that I can with the time that I have, which will run through December of next year. So Jamie, thanks from the bottom of my heart for asking me to talk about this a little bit and giving me some time to share and try to answer any questions anybody may have.
I love it. Those sound so wonderful. And I hope that we can get folks who have questions to raise their hands. Ricardo, can you direct people to the hand reading area? I think it's in reactions. Is that right?
Yes, that's right. So on the bottom of your Zoom window, you'll see a little smiley face with an addition mark. If you hit reactions there, you'll get a little pop-up and the first button that says raise hand. It'll arrange in order that you raise your hand. So please feel free. I'll also spotlight folks. So does this feel okay? I can sort of have, if anyone has a question, I'll add them to the spotlight here and we can have a conversation.
Can I respond to one comment that was in the chat from Giovanni Singleton, whose work I adore? And yes, I said I probably wouldn't read experimental poetry on the poems on air, but I would absolutely be interested in it for the blog. So Giovanni, if you want to, please email me. I'm going to put my email in the chat. And if you have some ideas, I would love to hear them. I don't want anybody to feel excluded. Especially you, oh my God, because I love your work.
Well, thank you, Lynn. I just said that because I do feel like, you know, I even asked this of people who I admire, who consider themselves experimental. It doesn't mean that it's not accessible or entertaining or that it can be read. As a matter of fact, I try to push my work so that it can be read, you know, even though it's highly visual. I don't want to privilege the visual over being able to read it and also teaching it. You know, I teach Gertrude Stein and Juvenal Hall and, you know, do all these really interesting things. I'm also going to be actually curating a poetry video festival. So I'm glad that you're also moving in that direction. I think it's a really exciting avenue to explore.
Absolutely. I need you for my teacher. You can help me figure out how to present it. I'm putting that on my list now. That's what happens when you speak out.
Congratulations, Lynn. I'm so happy to see you here. And Jamie, thank you all for your great work.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have questions for Lynn or suggestions, ideas, comments? Scrolling through here. Let's see. Okay, well, I did want to comment on the idea of the poetry video thing. And I wanted to ask, I know that social media has been getting a lot of bad press recently, especially Instagram. But I know that a lot of people, you know, are on there. And I was wondering if you ever thought of the idea of having like a social media account for the LA poet laureate, if you already have that, or if that's something that they would be interested in doing, just as a suggestion or idea?
Yeah, I have not done it thus far. And I probably, if I listen to the young folks in my family who say, "Auntie Lynn, I mean, really, Facebook?" You know, and they want me to do some other social media thing that I don't know what it is. So I haven't really explored it, but it is on my list. It's been suggested by some folks. So it's just a matter of doing that in addition to the podcasts, not trying to take from one for the other. So it's something to think about, though. I think, you know, every way to get it out there, it's definitely something to think about.
Yeah, because you were talking about how poetry, you know, people go to poetry for those special occasions or for those dark days, you know, a death or a marriage or an inauguration. But what happens in between? And I think one of the things I remember hearing people talk about, in particular Luis Rodriguez, former LA poet laureate, he was saying that music needs to be, should be part of our culture every day. Just the living, breathing part of our lives. Poetry should be part of that. Unfortunately, our culture is not that way. So what can we do as, you know, writers, as cultural workers to to encourage that kind of tradition? And that is not an easy task.
Well, I have to say, I was a little surprised, well, not surprised, but dismayed, because I knew it was true in terms of the bureaucracy of the city and who gets to decide what gets posted where and how. And it's challenging. I'll put it that way. It's really a challenge to, when you think about public entities, which would be the way to reach out to large segments of the population. It's not made easy, because it isn't part of the fabric of who we are as a society. If it was, I would think it would be a lot easier to sit on a bus stop and see a poem on the back of the bench or to see a poem in the kiosk. I'm working on it, but there are a lot of hoops to jump through. And the effect of the pandemic has been, people are not in the jobs that they were once in. And so, "Oh, can I reach somebody?" Phones ringing, ringing. People are working from home. So it's just a challenging time, in addition to the usual challenges that poets run into.
So I, hi everyone. So I do see a question. I'm sorry, Elena has their hand raised. I'm just going to try to add you in, Elena, to the conversation.
Hi, Elena.
Hi, Lynn. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Good to see you.
So wonderful. You know, you're such a, talking about accessible, you're such an accessible, wonderful person with whom to engage. I imagine you will get a lot done during this time. But what I wanted to, you know probably what my question's going to be. Now that I'm studying film and screenwriting and playwriting, I'm interested in what you're thinking about in regards to film and poetry.
Yeah, it's not really so much something that I'm thinking about, but something that someone contacted me about getting involved in and a project that she has. So, and I don't really know the ins and outs of it yet. So but believe me, when I know enough and am empowered to share, I will share. But it's not, it's not something coming from me, for which actually I'm a little grateful, because I don't need anything else on my plate right at the moment. But I am looking forward to at least learning more about it and seeing where she wants to take it.
Yeah, that's really interesting, because obviously there's a lot of intersections going on. And I mean, I've done panels at AWP on the subject, but I'm I mean, I've done panels at AWP on the subject, but I'm, I'm constantly fascinated. And I find that there are quite a few people in our program who identifies poets as well. Um, and they, they have less of a, a concern about the fact that they might put one foot in one water and another foot in another water. Some, I, I feel that the younger generation is that way too. So let's hope that, that there's more of that kind of dialogue going on.
Yeah, I think we're very much in a time of mixed genre from visual arts to film to dance just across the board. And that the younger artists in particular are inspiring those of us who are a little older, including myself, um, to, to look at those possibilities because some really stunning things can come out of that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, well, we look forward to hearing more when it, as it unfolds.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have another question for you, Lynn.
Okay.
Um, so this is kind of a broad question, but um, what do you love most about poetry, the poetry of L.A.?
Um, Los Angeles is such a rich history in terms of the diversity of the city. Not just racial diversity, but religious diversity, age diversity. And of course, we're large, so naturally we would have that. But I really notice it a lot when I go to other cities that aren't as diverse. And I'm thinking, where are the people? You know, where, where, whatever. So I, and I think because of that and because we are uh, all of us in some way Hollywood or film adjacent, a lot of these stories get told. If through, if they could be through dance, through theater, whatever. And, and it's a constant source of inspiration, I think, for all of us who put pen to paper or finger to keyboard and we're trying to develop some work. It's the influence of all these voices and languages and, and philosophies, et cetera. That, that's what really makes me love my city and think every time I think I should leave, well, sometimes I think I should leave the entire country. But um, I try to think of where I would get the same kind of richness that I get here. Oh, and I see some hands too.
Thank you. Yes, we have some.
Stuart, hi Stuart. It's so good to see you.
Stuart, you look great.
Thank you. It's been a while. Is that Beverly sitting next to you?
Yes.
Hi, Beverly.
Fame, fame agrees with you. Fame agrees with you. So I'm sure you're aware, and it would seem an appropriate moment to mention again, the wonderful project Robert Pinsky did, Favorite Poems?
Yes.
And the W, the, I posted the website to you. It's, you may know it, www.favoritepoem.org, where he
Absolutely.
dives into the community, speaks to the kids. And some of them have the most, as you remember, you've seen it, the most poignant, touching, moving stories. And then he asks them, please select a poem and read it.
Right.
So the voices of the young, uh, you know, with all the struggles to understand concepts and the mastery come forward in that experience. I adored it. I'd like to mention it to the assemblage here, thirty-six people.
Absolutely. That was, it was a great project and he had many great projects like that. So thanks for the reminder. That was terrific.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. As, good to see you both.
Yeah.
Is the gallery open?
Well, by appointment, you know.
By appointment. So anybody that's interested in amazing art, contact Stuart Denenberg and make an appointment and go and see that artwork.
We have a project that may go on to Beyond Baroque with, because the poet Wallace Ting, a Chinese-American, worked with San Francis in nineteen sixty-four to produce One Set Life, which we're showing. But his poems come as well. And we're thinking of Beyond Baroque to exhibit them. It seems like a possibility.
So that's the perfect synergy that we were talking about before. Exactly. Exactly right. And Andrea has her hand up with her new book. Congratulations.
Hi, Lynn. Lovely to see you. Um, I, I raised my hand because I, I wanted to give a shout out um, to, to the Poems on Air podcast at the library, which I think is just lovely.
Thank you.
And um, I shared uh, the podcast when you did my poem. And it went all over the country and all over L.A. And I'm still getting responses to it.
That's, that's what I wanted. That's perfect.
Good. I'm glad. And um, but I feel like it's sort of buried on the library website. And how can we help it get more traction?
Well, I don't want to insult my benefactors. But I do think that the website could use with a little, a little redesign in the way that it's structured. For those of you that haven't been to the website, I think the challenge is the word that I'll use, is that their, their front-facing page goes to the collections. And there's a very tiny box that if you look around long enough and don't give up, that says library website. And if you go to the website, then you can get to poems on air. But it's not uh, obvious. I'll put it that way. And I, I have mentioned it. I am not the boss, which is really irritating. I don't know why I'm not the boss of everything, but in any event, um, uh, I think it is a challenge and you're not incorrect. I, I'm just not sure redoing their website is at the top of their priority list right at this moment. But, but it is a bit of a challenge. And so I'm glad when they thought, we finally got on the Apple Podcast and on Spotify because it, it may be easier for folks to go there. But if you have some ideas, I mean, I literally, I saw, I record it once a week. I recorded one today, um, and send them the text. Um, and usually I, I promote it on um, Twitter, Facebook and Instagram with a link directly to it. But not everybody is on social media. And so it's, it's not obvious and apparent. So I'm, I'm still thinking of ways to get it out in the world. So thank you for raising that point and thank you for, for sharing it so broadly. I appreciate it.
I will share it on our California Literary List serve.
Oh, thank you.
I'll be sure to do that. So it gets a little more attention. And I could stream on the spot and ask you um, to uh, read one of your poems. I got, I've been getting some requests. Um, I don't know if you are willing to.
I'm always willing to read a poem. What should I read? What should I read? What should I read? So this is my baby fretwork. This is my, my latest collection with a gorgeous cover by the artist Alison Sarr. Um, uh, fellow alum from Scripps College. And so let's pick something from here. Give me a second. I'll read this one. The mollusk museum. One, family. Is and is not a velveteen pillow. Theater. A dinner hour mistake with candy yams on the side. A box at the bottom of. Flightless penguins hitchhiking through town. Footprints in a cemetery. Two, symmetry. Two moon pies for gypsy. Greedy art and dirigible need. Rushes and reeds tracing paper on papyrus. The solo, the ensemble. Wood ticks, wax moths. Hand drum thrum thrumming the hand. A river, a poplar, the same old questions. Three, war. I come to struggle, to eat the edges of, to abrade the chemical and the all-chemical in the falling night. Always a souvenir wrapped in a rigamarole. Vivaldi versus Jay-Z. I'm wrapped in biblical passages, but never in any book of Revelations or Quran or Green Hornet. All is taboo. Every day is like any other habit. A telegram, never opened. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I love that. The thrum, thrum, thrumming of the drum or something. Beautiful work.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Lynn, for joining us for this panel and taking off our conversation. Um, now is our time to open things up for community sharing. This means that anyone is free to make announcements if you have upcoming events that you'd like to share with the group. Um, if there is a particular reason that you're reading for, um, or something that you have to um, offer as a resource, something you've found useful. Um, this is the, this is the moment to open things up to the group. And I am to just ask that you raise your hand, um, if you'd like to share. Don't be shy. Kim, is that a, is that a yay or I want to share? You're muted.
Probably a good reason why I'm muted, but. Hi. I have nothing, I have nothing to share except that um, it's just really great to see you, Lynn.
Oh, Kim, it's wonderful to see you.
Um, I just want to share that I'm so tired of Zoom. And I want to see everybody in person with our masks. We can hug. But I, I miss it. I know we all do, but um, I just wanted to see you even on the screen and say congratulations to you. And we're very lucky to have you in this role. And as Elena said, um, you're going to do great things. So I'll just second what she said. And um, and this, everybody, you know, honestly, I'm just so over this. I went to see, um, Stephen Raines, um, had his
His book launch, yeah.
His launch on Saturday. And I was teaching a class on Zoom and I raced out to drive to Hollywood. And there was no place to park and I had a panic attack, you know? It's like, oh my God, we're not used to being out there in the world. And when I got there, it was so many people and I felt suddenly, you know, we all feel unsafe and weird and, but I managed to see him and get a book and
Good.
But um, I can't wait for us all to be together again, really. You know?
This is reminding me of how much we all miss each other physically, face to face or mask to mask, whatever the case may be.
I mean, masks were fun for a while.
Yeah, so over it.
Um, but um, anyway, congratulations and I wish you the best for all you're going to do. And let's have a Zoom-free spring.
Absolutely. I've got my fingers crossed for that. Thanks, Kim.
And hi to my friends, all my friends out there. So that's, that's the story.
Hi, Wendy.
Hi. I hope you can hear me. Um, I'm going to pop something into chat real quick. Um, I just wanted to mention that I'm going to be teaching a sci-fi coup speculative poetry workshop on October the sixteenth with Roberson Museum, which is in New York, but it will be a virtual class. Um, all proceeds benefit the museum. And just go ahead and look into the chat and you'll hear a little bit more about it. Um, just for, just to say what it is, sci-fi coup is basically science fiction themed haiku. And my class goes into the history of the form. It's been around for forty to fifty years. Um, and I also have a, a brainstorming technique that I teach that seems to be very popular when I teach the class. I will be teaching it also this coming Friday at the San Diego Dr. Who Con, which will be free. It'll be Friday afternoon. If you happen to be going, stop on by and you can have a free poetry class. Uh, anyway, that, that's, that's about all. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Hi, Ruth.
Hello. Um, my camera's off because I'm having trouble with my camera, but hi, everybody. And Lynn, a huge congratulations to you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Excited um, with all that you discussed and definitely your laureate appointment is so richly deserved.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Um, I wanted to announce to the group that I teach at College of the Desert out here in Palm Springs. We're kind of the um, I don't know, cousin of Los Angeles. And we do have a lot of people relocating out here to the desert from Los Angeles. So I see a lot of more opportunities for collaborations and overlaps between all of us, hopefully. And um, I am parading and ongoing visiting Authors of Color Literary Series at College of the Desert. And we shifted onto Zoom since the pandemic began. And our next reading, I decided to collaborate with the National Endowment for the Arts Big Reads Program, Arango Basin, which is up in Joshua Tree, to um, host a virtual poetry reading in conjunction with the programming they're doing for Joy Harjo's book, um, An American Sunrise. So the focus for our reading is featuring three native poets from California, including Cassandra Lopez, Kim Shuck and Deborah Miranda. And this will be held on October twenty-fourth. Everybody's welcome and the event is free. And all three poetry, poets are contributors to Joy Harjo's, her recent, um, The Norton Anthology of Indigenous Poetry. So I'm very excited to be hosting this and wanting to get the word out. Um, also wanted to announce, and I'll go ahead and post the link to that, um, if you'd like to register to attend. I'll put that in the Zoom or in the chat. And I've been working at the Desert Institute at Joshua Tree National Park for the last year to develop some creative writing workshops. And the series is called Writing Your Inner Desert. And so I am offering a workshop this Thursday. If anybody's interested, you can register for that at the um, Desert Institute at Joshua Tree National Park. And definitely hoping to grow this program and wanting to bring connections to Los Angeles poets and writers. For so long, um, I just felt like I've been alone in the desert and now I just see so many more doors opening and very excited to try to help facilitate more of that. If you have questions about any of this, just feel free to contact me.
Thank you, Ruth.
Yep, you're welcome.
Sounds fantastic, Ruth.
Thanks.
Hi, Michael.
Hey, hello. Hey, Lynn.
Hi, Michael. Good to see you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to hear that poem. I was, I, I was one of those people asking for that. Um, yeah, I guess this could fit in the announcement section. I don't know if you've already reached out to the Museum of the African Diaspora. I saw someone earlier wrote, get up to San Francisco, which I, I would uh, second that emotion. Um, but the Museum of the African Diaspora has a great um, series. I think it's called Moad Lit. I've, I've read it and I'm going to be reading it in it again soon. But if you need a, if you need a hookup there, let me know.
I do need a hookup. You have my email. Will you email it to me?
Sure, sure.
And not that you couldn't share it with the rest of the group. I'm just saying.
Well, I was, my next point is I was going to advise everyone um, on here, if you love poetry and you know, looking for um, other readings, uh, check out Moad. That's M-O-A-D. Um, the Museum of the African Diaspora. And I know that their series takes place on Thursday nights. I don't know if it's every Thursday, but um, it's a Thursday night.
It's a good series. So thank, thanks for the reminder and I'll, I'll look forward to getting the contact from you.
All right. You take care.
You too. Good to see you.
Hi, everybody. Um, thanks for the shout out, Lynn.
You're welcome. It's just so good to be here.
Yeah, well, it's good, it's good to be able to sit up for an hour or so. But um, what I want to announce to the group is that last December, uh, we restarted the, uh, what was the Valley Contemporary Poets with a new name, which is uh, VCP SoCal Poets. And uh, because of uh, my health reasons, I took the summer off. But we will have our next reading on November seventh with Ashaki M. Jackson, Lisa Chibi and Sochi Lisa Bormejo, which uh, um, I'm going to post the link. It's uh, November seventh at three P.M. It's the link to our website, which uh, will also allow you to access uh, past readings we have done. And also a fun thing we did during the summer, we're talking about uh, poetry film and um, not, not during summer, but during um, April, Poetry Month, uh, we posted Uh, we posted a prompt every day by a poet who recorded themselves reading the prompt and sent it to me. So um, that's uh, what's coming up with us. Um, we are also gonna be at some point going uh, live, but we don't have a location because I started it up during the pandemic. So if anybody has any recommendations, uh, the email address is uh, on the website. Um, we are trying to
Oh, we lost you. Somehow you got muted Jerry.
There we go. Thank you.
Posted on the website.
Okay, so what's posted on the website is um, um, the fun thing we did during uh, Poetry Month. I don't know if you heard that already. Um, but check out our website. It's got a lot of fun stuff on it. Um, I was talking about, we are looking for a um, a location because I started up the uh, restarted it up during the pandemic. And though we're going to maybe continue as a uh, online reading um, on a regular basis, I think we're gonna have occasional live readings. Um, and hopefully um, Lynn has agreed to do the April month. And hopefully by then we will be in a live spot. So um, that, that'll be great. So I'm inviting you to that. Uh, check out the, the um, the VCP SoCal Poets website, which I will put in the uh, chat. And um, one other thing, um, in, I don't have December booked, but in January, we're having Peter J. Harris and Luis Rodriguez. So um, keep, yeah, keep in touch. Thanks.
Hi. I think, can you hear me? Okay, all right, great, great. Okay. Yeah, so how, um, I'm from LA. I'm from LA, but I'm up in, up in So I don't know if this, is my echoing?
Yeah, it's an echo.
Yeah, there's a major echo.
Something is weird. All right. Well, why doesn't someone else go first and maybe I'll log back in. Does that work?
Still a bit of an echo.
You can also um, put announcements in the chat too.
Yeah, okay. Better?
Not better yet.
It's not better yet? Okay, no, it's not. Okay. Right, I'll, I'll go back in.
I think it might be because too many mics are open that we're getting the echo.
Okay, do we have? I think that's it for now. Um, I hope I'm not echoing too much. I can, I can hear it a little bit. Is it?
Better now, better now.
Okay. So I just wanted to share um, a poets and writers announcement. Um, I wanted to um, promote our new feature, which is called Poets and Writers Groups. If you haven't checked it out, it's a really fun new tool for anyone who um, would like to start a writing group or already has a writing group and needs a, a way to facilitate the group or would like to find a writing group. And um, what it is, is you can uh, go on there and register, create a profile, and then you can look at all the groups that are already on there and see which ones are open. Um, you can also start your own group and there is a free video conferencing tool that is unlimited time. Um, it's a lot like Zoom. Um, so it enables you to um, meet with your writing group uh, via the Poets and Writers Group platform. So I thought that would be of interest to all of you, since many of you um, probably have your own groups or might like to start one. Links to Lynn's podcast and um, also links to upcoming events when that Lynn is doing on October 17th. Um, it's a writing workshop with the Poetry Lab. Um, so check that one out. And um, I also wanted to encourage anybody here who is an event organizer events featuring poets, fiction writers or nonfiction writers um, to look into our readings and workshops mini grants program. Um, we fund literary events throughout the state. And the grants are really small, uh, 50 to 350 for a reading and 50 to 500 for a workshop or a series of writing workshops. Um, and it's a really good time to apply because we're at, kind of at the, still at the beginning of our fiscal year. And the grants are mostly made on a first come, first served basis. Although we do prioritize applications for events that reach special populations or marginalized groups, um, like teens or seniors or veterans, uh, formerly incarcerated, um, urban job seekers, that kind of thing. So if you have any questions about that, uh, feel free to reach out to me or to Ricardo or to both of us. And we're more than happy to answer your questions. It's really easy. And it takes maybe 15 to 20 minutes to fill out an application for the very first time. And um, yeah, that's, I mean, that's about it for the readings and workshops program. If anybody has any questions, you can, you can follow up with me. And I would also really appreciate it if um, you would take a minute to give us your feedback about this event. Um, we're gonna post a link in the chat for everyone. Um, we love to hear your suggestions uh, for future events, uh, topics you'd like to hear discussed. And also just your praise and criticism is welcome as well. So I think with that, unless there are any um, final comments uh, or questions, I'll just give it a second if anybody wants to say anything at all. Um, now is the time.
I just want to thank you again, Jamie, for inviting me. This is really wonderful and I hope to attend more frequently. It's a, a font of information. So it's great. Thanks to everyone who came.
Thank you so much for being here Lynn. And I will send um, I will send a roster out to folks and a copy of the chat. So in case you missed any of the links, I will send that out. And I think Brian, Brian, you wanted to say something?
Oh, hi. I just wanted to say hello and wonderful to see you all. Um, I'm, for those who I don't know, I'm Brian Sunny Wallace. I'm currently serving as the poet laureate of West Hollywood. And um, super excited uh, to connect and to see this like, growing poet laureate programs all across like LA County has been really cool this year. Um, and Lynn, of course, I owe you, I owe you an email. Um, but if folks have in particular LGBTQ poets and poetry things that they're interested in, I would love to connect with you. And I'm uh, at rentpoet, rentpoet@gmail.com. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Brian, for joining us. And again, and thanks to all of you for being here. I hope you'll join us again. Uh, we'll be a bunch more of these town halls in the future. And if you're a literary presenter, we'll also be doing a literary presenter check-in, which is a little bit of a different format. Um, coming up in November and that's gonna be announced uh, next week. So I hope um, that we'll see you again in the Zoom and eventually in person. So thank you all and uh, you can get in touch if you, if you need any, any questions, answers about readings and workshops.
Thanks. Bye everyone. Take care.